Turn red, and let's turn it red now.
Okay, this meeting is being recorded, and if Damon joins us.
He said he either joined virtually or in person depending on when he got out of work.
Okay, if he joins remotely, we'll have to do roll call votes.
Bill, Jay, I don't know if you can hear me, but Jay called. Jay called, and he's not gonna make it. I don't know what to say.
I can hear you, Jack.
They can hear me online.
Has been sent on you? All right. No sound.
There's Eric to save the day.
Jack, can you say something?
Yes, how's everyone? You can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, it's better.
Bill, I was just gonna say that Jay called, and I don't think he's gonna be able to make it.
Would it?
Jay.
Oh, Jay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. So.
We have a copy of the minutes.
The minutes aren't ready yet. We're gonna have to wait till the following meeting. All right, so first item on the agenda tonight. Site plan review for seven NIMUC drive. Anyone here for seven NIMUC drive?
Yeah. So the issue is that I don't see hearing those. This went out to the abutters. It did go into newspaper that showed Elisa how to do that. But this was between Gail and Elisa.
Yeah. We get it, mistakes happen. The. It's, I mean, you can give a review of the project if you want. Nothing's gonna happen until we get our report back from our town engineer.
Right.
So.
Bill, you can hear, you can't hear any testimony.
Right, she can just give an overview, as long as it's not deliberation.
That's correct.
And we'd have to get the same over the next year.
More than likely. We're missing two members, and where it's a special permit, I need these other two members present. Oh, site plan review. Probably be a good idea to have one.
It's, I guess it's what I've got the button on the board is we're certainly happy to give you an overview. I think the biggest thing that we're gonna need some assistance from the town on is the access permit. Once we present the project to you, we have access off of NIMUC and Route 16. And Mass DOT issued a note under their shaft program with the submittal saying that they don't believe we need a second. We don't need the access offer Route 16. So we responded to them today and sent Dylan and Jack under a copy of the letter. So to the board.
Yeah, I think, I think you kind of headed yourself then.
Right, so we, our experience has been with Mass DOT that we need to file beforehand or in conjunction with submitted work. So.
Okay, why don't we just continue this down the road? I don't even, I'm not even sure we need to open the public hearing at this point.
You can't.
Because that was advertised, right?
Bill, if the abutters haven't been notified, I really don't think you should open him.
So we'll just, we'll just vote to select a new hearing date. What do you think? You'd be ready with that information?
It's up to the town as far as issuing the abutter notification.
I mean, we can go forward with the site plan with your entrance the way it is.
Yes.
You know, you just, if you don't get it from the state, that's your problem.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, so what we'll do is I made a motion on table once. Do you want to go to the next meeting?
So the next meeting, we don't have 13 days of the butter notification.
It's not enough. I'm gonna go to the following.
Fourth of November.
November 4th.
And Jeff 3.
No, it's not, no, it's not. We need to just schedule the public hearing for next day.
That's correct.
Officially newspaper at our expense.
Yeah.
We'll send out a butter notification.
Sounds good.
With a new hearing notice.
All right, so we'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for seven NIMUC drive for November 4th.
16.
16.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
We turned it to Graves, so Graves has it.
November 4th. Make sure Jeff knows that we get that on the board for the 4th, please. All right. All right, gentlemen, and I would have rather done this with a full board here today. There's a new zoning bylaw. Accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Just in case those of you unaware, the, the. State has already come out with their own accessory dwelling unit bylaw. It says of right now, the only, pretty much this mirrors the state version. The only difference is you can't lessen what the state allows, but you can relax what the state allows. One area we relaxed was the. Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, one area was the state bylaw. Is up to 900 square feet, but they do allow 1,200 square feet based on special permit.
Correct, that, that's an option. The 900 feet is not an option. But to, if you wish to have a bylaw that goes to 1,200 feet by special permit, that, that's up to each town.
Yeah.
The second discretionary piece, if that's what you want to call it, is you could have a bylaw to have two, allow two dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units per dwell, per existing dwelling unit. The committee that Bill chairs decided they think, as Bill says, you gotta crawl before you walk. So he and the committee agreed with him to reduce that to one. I don't know if Jane is on the line, and Dylan knows a lot about this. They're the two I recall that were discretionary.
Yeah, Jane, you, are there any other amputations between the state and this, do you recall?
No.
No, I was pretty sure that was it also.
And they didn't give us a lot of wiggle room.
No, I mean, the state is determined to increase housing, any, any possible scope they can. So this is step number one. I'm sure there'll be more coming down the pipe too.
And as Bill knows, this was, this became a priority of the zoning bylaw committee. And they voted last week unanimously to move this to the planning board and ask the planning board to sponsor it.
So I'm gonna make a motion to recommend the accessory dwelling bylaws at town floor.
Ask questions first?
Sure, absolutely.
I assume, well, maybe I shouldn't assume, but do all of the typical setbacks and everything apply to accessory?
Yeah. Yeah, the rest of the potential building code applies.
And. Sorry, I'm just scanning your list now.
Yeah. I mean, we can take a final vote at the next meeting if you guys wanna add and look at.
I think that'd be perfect. I mean, unless I'm the only one who's just seeing it for the first time. I guess the other thing that I'm interested in understanding is what specifically defines something as an accessory dwelling unit versus, you know, other parts of our bylaw existing right now where like you're gonna have to shut up all the property, things like that.
Well, the accessory dwelling, it has to have a kitchen, you know, bathroom, it's gotta have living space.
Right.
Can't just be an outbuilding.
And, and, and it can, for Eric and others, it cannot be limited to family members or anyone. It has to be, it's open to anyone. It can be rented, it can be owned. The primary owner has to be living in one of the units. That's statute, that's a demand, and that goes in effect February, whether we like it or not. And my only other comment, Bill, you weren't, you couldn't make the last meeting. This, unfortunately, timing is everything, but town meeting deadline is tomorrow to get a warrant article in. So we're, we're cutting it close.
Can I suggest, Eric, you asked sort of the definition of an ADU. Can we also add a definition of the ADU to the bylaw? In the definition section?
That's a great idea.
The one that the state, this is basically off the state, so we can use the definition.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that helps to simplify.
So we'll have to. In the definitions section, so we're gonna have to have another amendment.
Right.
So.
Well, we can add it now.
Make sure these place, make sure the two placeholders, one for the definitions section and one for this. Well, if you guys, we've got time here. If you guys want to look through it real quick.
Yeah.
I've been through it a million times already. Go ahead, Bill.
So 1331J. Says the area of proposed accessory dwelling unit exceeds 900 square feet, or have the area the primary dwelling unit. Should say shall not exceed, as it says in 1E.
Which one are you, 133?
1331J. Following conditions require the issuance of special permit by the planning board. The area proposed accessory dwelling. Should never reach a maximum of 900 feet or half the area of the primary dwelling, whichever is smaller. Accessory dwelling units may be built up to 1,200 square feet in the area by special permit.
The following condition require insurance.
This would be if it does exceed over, if it is over 900 square feet or half the area, then it would go to.
This is identifying the special permit.
Yeah, instead of.
It's required. Yeah, if you read the sentence at the top, the following conditions require the issuance of a special permit. The area proposes over 900 square.
Barry, if, if the.
Exceeds 900 square feet.
Well, that's when you'd apply for the special permit.
Square feet or.
No, that's when you'd apply for the special permit.
Right, if it exceeds it.
If it exceeds.
So it should say if it exceeds it, not exceeds.
No, it's not exceed.
It can say if the area of the proposed accessory dwelling unit exceeds 900 square feet.
Yeah, if you put it at the header line, you know, of a special permit by the planning board, yes, colon, and then.
That's fine.
It makes, if that makes it clear.
It, yeah, it doesn't need to grammatically, but it could.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions? I know we got a question out here.
Like, I think the 17 warrant, the S E N.
Oh, it's the 17.
And so, and that, I'm not sure if you can check that, but I'm maybe starting.
That's my recollection as well, Mr. Goddard.
Okay, well, that gives us some time then if we want, if you guys want to take a deeper look.
Oh, I thought it was the eighth, Dylan. We've been running on the assumption it was the eighth.
Well, that's when the warrant closes. We might have built in a little bit of buffer.
Yeah, the warrant closes tomorrow.
Yeah, so we need, we could do a placeholder. I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, without the actual language.
Take your time, folks. You know. If we've got the placeholders in and it's not gonna go off for print until the 17th, I'd like the other board members here to take a look at this, to be honest. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of substantial changes to the town amendment. I mean, accessory dwelling unit's gonna be popping up everywhere. The state imposed this because they want to add 5,000 of these units within the next five years. To the state of Massachusetts, so we'll see. We'll see.
Getting together before the 17th?
Yeah, when's our next meeting?
23rd.
Oh, I guess not.
You get a special meeting?
No, that's, we'll just deal with it. Let me know when you guys are ready. I'm just looking for a second at this one.
Good.
You're good?
I don't see anything else that I'd really.
Bill, Jay is online, so you're now in.
All right, so Jay, did you, did you listen to that whole conversation regarding the?
Do that, if Jay's online, let's announce him, member of the planning board, attending remotely.
We, we now have a member of the planning board attending remotely, Jay Cross. Jay, have you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hi. I have some spotty cellphone reception, but I'm here.
Have you had an opportunity to look over the accessory dwelling unit bylaw?
He's on hold, whatever that means.
Sorry, guys, my cellphone keeps cutting out. I think I heard, have I had an opportunity to review? And the answer is no.
Okay. I don't know whether we should ask him to abstain for now or.
Up to him.
Would you be willing to abstain? Or do you want to take a look at it?
I would prefer to take a look at it.
Okay. Did you hear any of the conversation regarding the accessory dwelling unit?
Bits and pieces, pieces of it, Bill, but not enough to make an informed decision.
Okay, this is basically, the state has released their own version accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Which states set as of right with bare minimum. Controls on it. There's only a couple of things that we've changed from the state version. One of them being allowing special permit. The state allows up to 900 square feet per unit. But you're allowed to go to 1,200 square feet by special permit. So we've allowed that, and we've restricted the number of units per. Per lot to one. Pretty much the rest of the bylaw mimics the state bylaw.
Sorry, Bill, I caught all of that, but that last part, something to one?
Oh, no, it, the last thing I said was. This bylaw mimics the state bylaw, except for those two items, the 900 square feet. Or to move it to 1,200 square feet with special permit. Or. The, we've restricted one unit per lot.
Okay, and what was the justification for going from nine to 12?
No, we've allowed that. The bylaw review committee felt that it was, was. If, you know, if we did it by special permit and looked at all the factors, if the planning board felt it was reasonable, that they allow.
If I can, Bill, Jay. The, the state is a mandate that will go into effect in February, whether this bylaw passes or presented or written or whatever. And the state mandates 900 square, up to 900 square feet. But they give the towns the option to opt in to allow up to 1,200 by special permit. And the committee felt that some flexibility might be in order. There's several members of the ZBA on, on the committee that have dealt with these over the years, way before me and you even on, on the committee, on the planning board. And that seemed to be a direction that we might want to consider.
Yeah, especially, you know, there was a lot of opinion voiced, you know, if it's a sizable lot. What's the difference between 900 and 1,200 square feet? The restriction doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I, I guess my only concern with that, guys, would just be, you know, that it's in conflict, further in conflict with our current zoning. But if it's by permit, I, I understand.
Yeah. I mean, that, these changes that are coming down from the state. I, I'm getting the feeling that there's a lot more coming that we're gonna end up having to deal with. We'll see, but. It, this one here is already signed, sealed, and delivered.
And Jay, since you missed it, the other discretionary item the state gives each town is you can allow up to two by right per lot. The committee felt we should take it easy and do only allow one per lot. But other, other than that, there wasn't a lot of discretion going on.
Yeah, I, I just feel like in, in the loss of control, if you will, that the more control we maintain, the better. That's all.
Well, it's a good point.
That's why it's by special permit, Jay.
Right, and if we didn't, if the town didn't adopt this bylaw in February, you'd have no control.
I understand.
Brendan?
Hello, Brendan Chanel, 16 Washington. I just wanted to point out one further thing that the committee decided to do was to restrict the rental of. Accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals, which is allowed by the state as well, just for the record.
Yep, forgot about that one. Thanks, Brendan.
No problem.
I, I got two more questions now. Going through this. As I've gone through, under 1331F. Is, and other local bylaws and regulations the only place for enforcing that the ADUs conform to the, the rest of our. Bylaws, do we need that to be firmer?
No, I mean, that's typical, that's typical.
The other question I have was, you know, given that these are subordinate units. That can be rented. There is a pathway by which I could see that people are seeking to construct these cheaply for rental income or whatnot. Do we need to do anything in terms of providing input or guidance into what the look and feel should be in terms of?
Well, they got it, and build it to the building code. I mean, they don't have a choice.
And also rentals are governed by border health, so if there is some sort of complaint about the standards of the building.
I guess it was not meaning so much as to the livability of it, but rather appearance, yeah.
Well, we do have design guides. And they're expected to review those design guidelines when they build, everybody. Well, it's, it's under the, our design guidelines under our. Yeah, I guess if you want to add the sign guideline.
Can I editorialize a little? I'm a little worried. I'm not entirely worried. I don't mind putting the design guidelines in there, but the mandate, and I mean a mandate of the state, is to make these as. Units that increase the housing stock, not to discourage them, but to encourage them. Now, you can interpret that any way you want, but we, I'm worried about backdooring that with some kind of design mandates.
I mean, the, the, the whole issue with this is this isn't, this isn't gonna come before planning. I mean, I think this is gonna be as of right, so this is going on building department, then. You know, all they need is a building permit to put these up.
But I, I, Bill, I do think that design guidelines are inherent in our bylaw, so. So I, I don't see a huge problem. I just want to make sure our intent is, the intent of the state is not jeopardized, that's all.
Yeah. I mean. We can make a reference, but like it says, the design by, design guidelines are already in the Bible.
You would be the same as building a one-family or two-family, they have to follow the guidelines.
Yeah.
What we can do is just sort of promote our guidelines more, so that people know that they exist and read them. So when they're building a house or an ADU or a two-family, whatever they're building, that they know that that exists, that document, and they can browse through it before they pick it up.
Yeah, it's something we should look to supply with the building permit app.
Yeah, I was like, so maybe I can just add that as sort of an attachment that they can browse through when they're applying for a new.
Yeah, because the design guideline isn't, we reference it within the zoning bylaw, but it's not actually a bylaw.
Right.
Can't do, you can't, it'd be difficult to demand somebody builds something that we want. We make suggestions, and if they play well, we play them, so that's generally how it works. And so we can, I think it's gonna be implied, and, you know, if we do this at the building permit level of the design guidelines, I think they'll go a long way. But she's absolutely right, no matter who builds a house, they go to a building plant, get a permit. You know, we, we try to encourage the design guidelines, but you can't force. We're not Kate Cott.
Well, you're better.
You can pick your own thing, so. All right. Jay, anything further or? Nope.
Uh, no, I, I do have an info sheet with some general information. That comes from the state laws. I had trouble attaching it to the chat. Maybe I can just email it to Jack and Dylan to share with everyone? That's pretty much, okay, I can email it along then.
And we can have, i- if, if the board supports this and it gets on the warrant, we can have sheets on the table for town meeting.
Oh.
Nothing further, Bill, too, by the way.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. All right, then, the motion's on the tables. It'll be a roll call vote, because we have a member remote.
So make a second.
You second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Eric College, aye.
All right, well, all right. Amber Zino, aye?
Jay Kraus, aye.
Good.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you.
Recommendation to town floor.
Yep. Thank you, Jane.
All right.
You're welcome. Good night.
Thanks, Jane. All right, we need. Set as the hearing date for Brianna Shid. 89 half of the V's for a special permit. Are you here tonight? You are here tonight. All right, so this is the mill building down. I mean, forever.
Yep.
Do you have, have you put any type of sketch or plans through? She does?
Yeah, yeah, so I, I can speak to this a little bit if that's okay. So she came to ZBA already for two variances. I conversed with Harris North, Town Council, to make sure she was getting all the right permits, because it's very confusing in our bylaws what exactly she needed to do. So Harris said to get two variances, get a special permit from planning board, and then also get a dog kind of license from the worst like, first like word. So this is step two. The ZBA heard a lot of evidence, and I can also provide those files along with the planning board package you'll be providing next week.
Okay. But. All right, so why, yeah, why don't we just set the, set the public hearing date? I won't have your. Public hearing date? I won't have your. Uh, I think I read a bunch of the stuff you're forwarding um and uh. So I don't think it's going to be too difficult. So why don't we just, we'll push it forward to the next meeting. I'll go over the materials at that meeting and we'll make a decision. All right, so if I can have a motion to set public hearing date.
The twenty first too soon?
No, it's correct. That's good.
So.
Your notices are.
Make the motion, set the uh. Public hearing for eighty six mile range three.
No.
No.
Eighty nine.
Eighty nine.
After that meets. Probably twenty first sixty.
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call.
Eric College, I.
I'd roll over.
Amber Zino, I.
Jay Kraus, I.
Okay, so we'll see you on. Twenty first.
Thank you.
I have one question. So the uh two more steps to go through.
One more, uh, the.
After this one. Got to get a kind of like.
Is that also.
Selectment.
At the same meeting?
No, select.
Okay.
Once you get all of your approvals in order, all package will go up to the selectmen. As long as everything's in order. Likely get a license.
Will that be like another month out for that meeting too?
Uh, I can't speak to the select boards, uh. You know, their schedule.
I was just talking to Ellen at the Park Office.
Yeah, like soon, get ahead of it, you know. Now, if you know if we're going to be done on the on the twenty first, I'll try to line something up right after. Unfortunately, there's a process. There's always a process. We have a selectman in the house. We're done. You're very welcome. All right, since the last item, the next item was mine and we're gonna hop and let you uh. We talked about something that's been a, you know, it's been a contention for a while. I uh. To be honest with you, when I saw Brendan's Brendan's comments, I've been trying to get that corner approved this. For five years now. That's how I met you, Bill.
Right, the first time was my first go on the select board, it was defeated. The second time, I think it was actually defeated by one vote. So it's getting better in turn and and. Uh, with the introduction, the uh age restricted mixed use overlay, which.
It was last time and they still.
But but we, I thought we pulled this particular parcel.
We did.
Right, so my. Because it's too soon, but the, yeah, we want to get the zone. I'd like to bring it back only because I think with the orchard, half orchard properties, I call it. There's a lot of um work going on. I mean, we we've sold a parcel for solar.
Yeah.
We sold a parcel for the the contain uh storage business at the bottom of the hill. We have a proposal for the Menden Senior Community Center at the top of the hill municipal use, which has been the primary reason we don't want to rezone it. I think it would. It would be good for, I think, the planning board and select board to present more of a comprehensive view of what what we think we can do. No specific proposals, but getting the overlay zone in there at least demonstrates what I like to see is. Diverse housing stock.
Yeah.
Commercial. And if we just take this first step, we don't know what exactly it's going to be, but we definitely set a direction to so the taxpayers see where we want to take it.
Yeah, I don't see this going on uh. The fall.
Why?
I think this should be on the spring. I mean. Certainly, we can, we can propose some town floor for the fall meeting if everybody agrees, but.
Fall, we need to be a special group.
Yeah, and that that's my concern.
Well, I think there's going to be a more, probably a bigger turnout, giving some of the things that will be on special town meeting in the fall. The senior center is an example.
But sometimes the fall meetings get stacked. That's my concern. It's, I think, the spring meetings bring out a lot, you know, or a larger group. But. The biggest thing is, I think you're going to need some. Some type of graphics to to. Show what could be done. And I think that's going to take some time to put together. I think if we just keep going in and saying, people can't vision what this could possibly turn into. So they're, they're reluctant about what they don't know. Now, other towns are doing this stuff. Uh, why, right, a lot more aggressive with this, these ADU, um, the uh. Onlines and stuff like that, age restricted. Uh, so this is one down the note and it's absolutely beautiful. Uh, it's got a mix commercially and residential within it and it's uh. Just, it's like a little tent. It's like a little village. It's like amazing. And I think if people from town saw and visuals and stuff like that of what could possibly be. I think they'd have a better understanding of what we're trying to do instead of just throwing paper at them and saying, this is a little.
I was going more simple. I mean, to this fact that those people that continually.
Send it up in the fall. If it doesn't make it, we can send it back out in the spring.
I'm I'm up that ilk. I don't have a problem. From a change management standpoint, you hit your head against the door eventually, but I'm going to defer. Yeah, well.
I mean, this planning board is.
Yeah, I'm deferring to you. I just want to throw it out there because I think we talked about it in the spring and it didn't make it on for for a similar reason in terms of it was just too soon.
And we do have two new members on the board that were.
Right.
Out of the board, I'm not sure what their feelings. I remember talking about the. I know you guys have been involved with us getting the online proof, um, what your feelings would be about that. I mean.
And I would even defer, I mean, our our mud is what I'm familiar with, but my intent from us. In person, so the the board hasn't voted on this. We've talked about it. So I'm speaking my personal. I want to see commercial get in there and I want to see, given our recent housing production plan, some effort towards setting us up for diversifying some housing stock. Right, those are two concepts. Now, whether I can't explain what it would look like, although I could probably pull up pictures if we needed to to show the people on the floor, like. This is what we're talking about, but I also don't want to think it's whatever picture we show, that's going to be it. So it's good of a double edged sword there. But for those people that want to hear us move forward in developing on economic development, building our commercial base from a tax standpoint. I think this is a positive message. For those of us who want to see housing built in a way that it's going to allow people to, you know.
Stay.
Stay amended and and come in amended. So both ends of the spectrum, et cetera. I think this is a positive message. Now, if those same people don't like the idea, then I'd say, well. You want it or you don't. Every time we come to you with a solution to drive towards those, you know, towards that strategy, you have to support it. But, you know, Brendan made a good point, said we should come before you. If if you want to defer, I'm going to defer to the planning board for since it's a zoning issue. But I also wouldn't be against having the select board and the planning board present to the town collectively to say, we think this is the right thing for the town.
Yeah. So. I mean, and I'm a believer in luck before you run, so before we start making any changes that I'm like. I think if we want to apply, and like I said, this is a. This is a. Entire board issue, so I mean, I'm not sure Eric's feelings or Jay's feelings. Uh, on, you know, what we would uh. You know, but to make the recommendation to uh town floor, I mean, we'd all have to vote. Pretty much on something like this, it'd have to be in unanimous vote. I mean, that's generally before. I'd like to send some of the town floor. I figure if I can't even get my own board to uh agree, you know, there's no use going to town floor with this, so. I don't know if you guys. Oh, Jack, go ahead.
Um, thank you. I, you know, I I I agree with Mike with everything Mike's saying. I think the armud. Was a very well written, comprehensive, forward thinking bylaw. Especially for Menden and it and we already see the one on Hastings Street starting to make some movement on their permitting. I know I had a meeting with the Suites last week. They are moving to look at the armud. They've hired a uh engineering group, land planning to look at it. But I think we're missing, and Mike and I have talked about this. The message I've been getting, I mean, I've been here three years. I think three times it came up. The message I'm getting from a vocal minority and all you need is one third. It's not about what you're proposing to do there. It's more that this is town land that was. Purchased for a certain purpose and that's not the purpose. And whether you agree with them or not. You know, that's really the essence. I think it's excellent planning. I think it's an excellent location and I love the synergy. Of having um the open space, the housing, a commercial sector and the. The senior center all together. That's what good planning is. But it's, there's a component of town meeting that, you know, is pretty stubborn about this.
Yeah, and and I mean, I hear the same thing. And I think the fact that we actually have a community use, Jack, at the top of the hill. We never had before for a proposal of one. Um, but, you know, I I understand what you're saying. I'm, I I would be more than happy to stand up a town floor and argue that point because in some cases, what we did twenty plus years ago. Our needs may have changed in that time.
I mean, it's definitely.
And and I think the fact that we we.
I think I I think age restricted housing around the senior center is exactly the perfect spot.
Yeah.
But. And and you know, uh, Mike, uh, Selectman Maroli at the last time this came up made a wonderful slideshow presentation about the revenue that's been generated. And the open space that's been protected from what you bought and you've already bought it several times over. So I think the the purpose is kind of moot a little bit. I don't know. I just think it's it's.
Well, we're not, Jack, we're not even close to getting getting back the money we spent on that. Not even close.
Well, I don't know about that. That that solar revenue was pretty high.
K three, K three million, Jack.
Yeah, and I think you're, by the end of the twenty years on the so on the uh solar panels, you're going to be close to that, if not over. Anyway, that's what Selectman Maroli showed. He had it all calculated and stuff.
Yeah, I just uh. The corner being what it is for the last twenty years has never sat well with me, so.
Well, if you don't go forward in town, the the special, I'll defer. I would want to, I will bring it back up to the end. And I may even speak to the idea at town special as it pertains to the senior community and communities and how to. It's the start. I was hoping we could provide a a more comprehensive view of like, you know, those, this, this, and we can see what it could be. Awesome. But if you, if there's a deferral to the annual, so be it. As long as, I would be kind of curious in general, I mean, do does the planning board support looking at through this parcel maybe differently than what Jack described in terms of town use? Moving forward in this direction? I'll speak for myself. This, I haven't heard of this until right now, so this is new to me. Uh, but I was just kind of jotting some notes down myself and I think that developing a narrative around it and helping me form an opinion would be awesome. So like, my first question is, why is this the right spot? And, you know, getting some more information around that would be helpful to me. Not being familiar with it, you started to to hint on it just now. But my brain went to, hey, isn't that where the senior center was going to go? Like, are these two projects in conflict with each other? Which sounds like no, but if I'm not educated at town meeting about that and I feel strongly about one thing or the other, I might see those as being in conflict. So clarifying that point would be. And then, you know, speaking kind of just to that, the housing aspect of it, we just had the the housing plan discussed. You know, how does this help address like the the affordable housing uh percentage that we need to up and and.
Requires ten percent affordable house.
Okay, so being able to kind of outline the narrative of those three things helps me, you know, make a decision.
I just think this is a tough tackle in in five weeks, you know, this. I mean, it uh. I mean, you can put a placeholder in and you can have further discussion at the next meeting. What I'd like for you to do is get familiar with the armud further. The members, I mean, it's um, it's a really great bylaw. But I I want complete transparency. I want everybody to know what they get involved in. Other than that, and we we haven't done one yet, but um. We really don't have like a senior housing bylaw. And that may. That may be a better alternative. And uh. You might have more buying. Than some type of senior house. I mean, those are state funded, you know, when the towns, you know. Get these uh senior housing units. I mean, the state's funding, so it isn't like the town's being. State's funding those three options. It might be a great consideration. I don't know. We have to look further into it. We have to see what some of the other towns are doing. And like I said, if we're going to go to town floor at this second another time, I said, I think we should have some visual age. That's just my opinion. I mean. Uh, it's not like the difference between the special town meeting and the annual. I don't think that much is going to happen in between there that we couldn't wait to be in.
Unless it would help, say, the senior center to pass demonstrating a comprehensive view.
That's a good, that's a good um.
Which is what we wanted to do last spring.
Yeah.
Didn't get. Does the senior center coming up again? But. I'll defer, I mean, unless, I mean, if you're to say we're completely against it, never think of doing it as both.
Oh, no, it's.
Sorry, my my comment, I should clarify. I don't have a position on it. I was just trying to understand.
No, mine's just, I'm not against it at all. I mean, Jack and I wrote the damn uh EDU armud by law. It um.
Till November, if someone were to speak to it, it would be of of a vision, what it could be, not that there's anything to vote on. And I'm talking about the mendings.
Yeah.
You know, why we think the seniors.
You know, we couldn't. Yeah.
I'm I'm kind of curious.
Actually, we couldn't, we couldn't do it on the uh. There needs to be a public hearing on the on the amendment to the zoning map. Uh, we wouldn't get it in by the fall meeting, so.
Spring.
Spring, you have to be spring. I forgot about that nasty public hearing, but. No one shows up and then yells at me at the town meeting. You know.
Over and over.
Over and over.
For the people that are opposed to this use there. What's the, what's the counter argument like? The only, the only opposition I've heard from some local minorities, as Jack said, on the floor was. It was bought for municipal use, period.
Well, what is, what happens? This is an old contingent in town. Um, I'm, it's been here a long time and, you know, that for whatever reason. They've been hung up on this, this purchase of town use, municipal use and, but they don't understand that. All the factors of that property, the grade is so steep, to use it for a, for any type of lies like a school or something. The excavation would be enormous with. It wouldn't be worth doing. So um. It uh. So they they've resisted this and like you said, last time they lost by one vote. And uh. And it's generally the same people who speak out against it in each one. And they have a lot of people that follow them, so it's kind of like. You know, a group thing and uh, so it unfortunately. You know, my wife didn't show up at that meeting, so we lost.
So we need to receive it this and perhaps the boards can work collectively on something for the spring.
Sure.
Not only on this piece, but positive recreational fields start moving in some.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm on board.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking to you.
Yeah. It's something I've been after for years. This town needs more recreational.
All right, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
No problem, Mike. We'll get together and we'll talk about this further.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
All right, the last item is mine, so I'm gonna step down from the chair and answer any questions you guys have, but I'll hand off the page. Guys, let's take a look at it. Okay, it's a simple way to watch it. My idea was a little, uh, unfortunately, it required lessening frontage. It's why it lessened frontage, my idea was, I, previously, there was a diagonal drawn here. That, uh, that was the original line. We had to do it because we have four hundred feet across the front. But this house was built sort of towards the middle, so to get two hundred on each, we had to cut that. I'm now selling the property, and it's kind of a disadvantage to have some other, you know, the guy next door who owns half your front lawn. So I went to the ZDA, they provided me the relief. We moved that one by man, and I took that and lay it here, just to both have the required uplink, so the, uh, it's eventually accepted this frontage that is now like hundred and sixty feet, uh, everything else is eventually right, so.
Just give me a second, I just want to put it on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, so Jake can see. Also, everybody can see.
Yeah, so I'm just stopping tonight.
And the reason is I'm selling that other property, so.
No, I just mentioned land planning.
Yeah, Bill, he's a good guy.
Yeah. I think that's who Bob's using, I, I'm not sure.
Jay, can you see that? Is Jay still up here?
Yep.
I'm trying to pull it up, give me a sec, Bill.
Take your time.
So parcel A is going to lot one B.
Uh.
Or vice versa.
Okay, parcel A is going to two B.
Got it.
Uh, parcel B is going to one B.
Got it, got it.
I'm just basically that, that line right at the end, they used to go down as a diagonal, I've just straightened it out, straight to the road.
Got it.
So in no line it cuts in front of the other property.
Well, you're right on the Uxbridge line.
I am, and just misses the corner of my property, I have no Uxbridge taxes too.
Yeah, you'd have, you could throw a rock into Uxbridge.
Yep.
I, I have it up now.
Basic, yeah, basically, Jay, the diagonal in front of the house that you see, parcel B. We, instead of being a diagonal, go straight to the road now.
Gotcha, squared it off.
Yeah. Yeah, it was kind of a ridiculous lot, um, um, you know, we should have taken care of it when we did it originally, but that's my parents' house, so, um, you know, there was no need to do anything, but now that I was selling the property, I had to, uh, it was devaluing the property, having that, uh, boundary line.
I, makes sense.
All right, yeah, it's a pretty simple one. So I can't even make the most of it, guys.
So make a motion, accept the eighty one P for eighty six mile or three.
Second.
You'll need a roll call.
All those in favor, roll call, though.
Oh, yeah. Eric Hodge, I.
I roll, all right.
Jay Kraus, I.
All right, can you guys come sign?
Jay, can you come in tomorrow or, and sign this?
To sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, maybe, yeah, maybe not tomorrow, but does it need to be tomorrow?
No.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it a point to get in there, uh, within the next couple days, how's that?
Okay, Elisa will have it.
Okay.
We just need three votes, and there's only two there.
What's that? Fifty bucks. What's the? What's the date for it? When is it?
Seven.
Seven? So you said twenty five a lot?
Yep, fifty bucks.
On a damage?
Did you just do your second?
I have kind of objection.
You can spell my name right.
You'd want it to be a lot more than that, if I was gonna put your name on it.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, so when you get the, uh, Jay's signature on there, can you just give me, if I gotta get that over on my turn, they're waiting to close on this thing. It's only taking me, I have title issues, I mean, it's been over here since I had the same agreement. Who's that? I mean, how was, did I need, how many need?
What?
The plane. I don't even need to stand up. I don't know, they say four.
Six four, do whatever's there.
Four, that's what I.
Four.
Yeah. So you get your.
He's planning in ZBR, so that, right?
So a lot to learn.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill, uh, it's a little late, but Damon is still at work, he apologized.
That's a, we, we made it to a dollar, so I didn't really know special permits on board.
Hey, yeah, that's right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, I think you get to one more vote.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So long.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call, Eric Hodge, I.
Jay Kraus, I.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, the twenty first.